This time I'm hosting, Michael. And Ward 3, Leominster, Massachusetts is where I've called home for the last 15 years. And although geographically it's the smallest ward in the city of Leominster, and I think population-wise it's down as well compared to some of the other wards, a hotbed of activity, especially this election. Ward 3 is home to our current City Council President, David Cormier. And in most of his races he has run unopposed, he has an opponent, Gary Zimmerman this time. We also have a contested school committee race for the ward. Heather Mazafaro, after one little two-year term, has decided to step down, and therefore we are asking, we are voting on her, basically who is her replacement in Ward 3. And so I welcome Isabella Lara, Joshua Klaus, excuse me. And so first of all, welcome to the show.
Thanks for having me.
So we'll get right to the questions. One thing I've noticed about this particular race, I mean, in this election cycle, there were people who were pulling papers, and for those who don't know, you pull papers to run for elected office in the city. You collect the necessary number of signatures, you file them with the city clerk, and then you get certified for the ballot, so your name can go on the ballot. And some people pulled papers in January, February, got an early start. In the case of both of you folks, and so I'm going to throw this same question out to the both of you.
Sure.
Both of you folks, literally a couple of weeks before the deadline for papers to be submitted, you decide to throw your hats in the ring. Sort of a two-part question. What inspired you and what inspired you at, with that particular timing? I'll start with Isabella, and then we'll go to Josh with the next question.
I had been going to all of the school committees' meetings in May, and that is when the whole entire fiscal budget crisis started to occur. And my mother works at Francis Drake, and she was affected. She didn't know if she'd have a job, she didn't know if some of her coworkers would have jobs. And so I took on going to the meetings and finding out as much as I possibly could, and watching how the school committee functioned, and who voted for what, and how the agenda worked, and all of those things really fascinated me. And I really wanted to see a change forward coming in this new election, because we can't have the same fiscal problems and budgetary disaster that we had just recently had. And so I wasn't planning on running. I didn't think that I could do it, and I didn't think that the response for a 19-year-old running would have been positive. But it's been extremely positive, and so I decided to pull papers in July, and it's been one of the best, best things I could have done.
Who else inspired you? Who serves as an inspiration besides your mother, besides your family?
I looked to Cody Casey. He's a young candidate, or a young school committee member himself. I looked to Brandon Robbins, who's running for City Council. He's 22. And so a lot of young people have run, and they have run a successful campaign, and they've been elected. And so I don't think age is necessarily a bad thing. I think it's to my benefit, especially in the election I'm running in. But yeah, Cody Casey was definitely an inspiration, and looking at him and thinking, oh, so he was young, and he could get elected, and he can be positive and influence change, was something that I thought I could also.
Came out of the same ward too, even though he ran at large.
He did come out of Ward 3. He's now at large.
Yep. And so Joshua, same question.
Michael, I think that's an excellent question. You know, technically, I pulled papers for both at-large school committee and Ward 3 towards the end of June. And I think, I share with Isabella, that the concern surrounding what we all saw with the budget crisis was very concerning, as a parent, as a community member, students. We also saw different factions in the community rise up, even students taking their concerns to City Hall, the school department, to city officials. So there was a lot of pressure. At the end of the day, I decided to run for Ward 3. I have a lot of deep roots into Ward 3, and I've, when I was first selected at 22 in 2003, I did very well in Ward 3. I served in public safety in Ward 3, worked in various places when I was younger, resided most of my life in Ward 3. So Ward 3's always been very near and dear to myself, and that's currently where my husband and my son and I reside also. But what I found interesting is that Leominster is great with having youthful people run for office. The last, the youngest elected school committee member was myself in 2003, and Cody Casey, you know, got elected later on, a little older than I was. So I don't see age as a barrier. I think there's a lot they can contribute. There's other candidates that are youthful people running for office. However, you know, now we've come full circle for myself, because I did play the new voice, the youthful candidate, at one point. Now I'm going to be 36-years-old. I'm not as youthful anymore. And I take my experience, and I look at how I can help our community and our schools currently, and that's where I'm coming at an angle. If elected in November 7th, I can dive right into the deep end of the swimming pool to help with our financial crisis. I was on the Finance Committee. I was a finance auditor. I was very active. Went to school, Pittsburgh State, I want to use it, for accounting. So I look at the experience I have now, and a concerned parent, as to why I decided to run at Ward 3. And quite frankly, at large, I chose to submit my papers, because if Isabella's elected, I also want her to have an opportunity to use forums like this, to get strong, to learn the ropes, having an opponent, so we can talk about the issues. Because quite frankly, if she was unopposed, she probably wouldn't be here. Maybe later on in the election, unopposed candidates would have some time, but really it's, it's important that we all get an opportunity to talk about those issues.
Just a small follow-up to both of you before we move on to the next question. You mentioned, you started to mention it briefly, and I'm curious, I'll just pose a specific question to each of you. Ward 3, obviously it's a contested race, and only, only one of you can, can be the victor. In an at-large race, there were some members of, it's basically unopposed, in other words, it's unchallenged, in that it's all incumbents, and there are no, there's nobody running. So, you know, if you do the math, you know, you have a 1 and 2 chance versus a 1 and 5 chance, or something like that. So what, why didn't you pull at-large? Just very quickly.
I didn't pull at-large because I wanted my focus to be on Ward 3, quite frankly. I've lived there for 14 years. I went to all the schools there. I know the staff, I know the students, I know my neighbors, I know a lot of people in Ward 3. And so I figured I would be their voice, not the whole entire city's voice, because ultimately, if elected, you do represent not only your ward, but the whole entire city. So I don't look at at-large versus Ward 3 as even much of a difference, quite frankly, because you do receive emails, concerns, things like that, from everyone across the whole entire city.
Joshua?
You know, whether it's our local government, like City Council, the school committees, or our state government with the House, or the State Senate, to our national, federal levels of Congress and the United States Senate, they all do the same job. Where they get elected from, it's up to them. In Massachusetts, for Congress, for example, you don't even have to live in the district to run for that position. Or Governor's Council, you don't have to live in that district to run for that position. However, we both do reside in Ward 3. I've ran at-large numerous times. School committee at-large was when I got elected in 2003, and I served, want my full term out. Ran at Council at-large, suspended that campaign due to my mother's terminal illness. And then, of course, many may remember myself running for State Representative last year. So I have the experience to run at-large, and that doesn't defer me. But at this time, I think committee member Heather Mazafaro, who has decided not to seek reelection, was a good representative. I just want to make sure we're going to have a good and just as possibly greater representative for Ward 3 as we go into the next few years with our schools.
Okay. And actually, that leads me to my next question. And I had the old show Bottom Line on this, on FATV, and interviewed all three Pittsburgh mayoral candidates, and there was an incumbent stepping down, much like you have here with school committee. And I asked them all the same question. And I'm going to ask you that same question, I'm just going to take it and apply it to school committee. We call that two things. And so I'm going to ask you, two things that you believe will start, we, Isabella, we start with Isabella last time, we'll start with Joshua this time. Two things you believe that the present incumbent school committee member, Heather Mazafaro, has done well, two things that you would want to improve on.
When you say improve on, you're talking about the school committee in general?
Performance.
Okay, performance.
Advocacy, performance, focusing on different issues, whatever you think is, is, because you know, you're, you're inspired to run for something, for some reason.
I think committee member Mazafaro has done a very good job representing Ward 3, listening to their concerns, bringing it to the table at the committee level, and really helping the process with policy and looking at the finances. And I understand and respect her desire to take a step back and spend more time with that family, because I can totally relate to that. However, there is a general need for improvement on the school committee, and I'm not going to make light of it. You know, I'm, I'm super excited to see a lot of different changes happen with the school committee going into this year. One being the Finance Chair isn't seeking reelection, so we're bound to have a new Finance Chair. I'm very excited to know that, and having had conversations with people, it looks like there's a strong possibility we will have a new chairman for the school committee. And we've recently saw the superintendent offer his resignation, and my opponent and I both have called and joined the teachers to say, why don't you leave now? Thanks, but no thanks. So as a committee, from my experience when, having served, I see a lot of dysfunction. I see that sometimes as a committee, they're forgetting their role and responsibility. The school committee's main role and responsibilities are really a two-pronged thing. One is the hiring, firing, the superintendent, and the finances. Roughly around 70% of taxpayer dollars, local taxpayer dollars, go to the schools. And from the committee level, to the chairmanship, to the superintendent, it's been dysfunctional, where we've literally been put into this position, where some call it a perfect storm, and I say enough's enough. We need a lot of change, and I hope the voters are watching, and the taxpayers pay attention, that it starts with electing the people that are ready to do the work, especially with those that have experience. And for some that have great ideas and are willing to put the time and effort in. My opponent has attended many school committee meetings. I personally don't attend as many, because common sense, I've been there. I'm just really surprised the school committee has literally accepted, for example, a two-page summary report on finances, and then we find ourselves in this predicament. When Superintendent Fratirelli was there, when I was on the committee, she gave us a binder, and it broke it down by schools, and line items, and departments. And it was, I'd like to get back to that. I'd like for us to, to have some functionality with the committee, and stop bringing MASC in, for example, to constantly review them.
So good thing I'm hearing advocacy, bad thing I'm hearing dysfunction.
Yes.
What is another good and bad thing, before I turn it over to Isabella?
So advocacy being good thing, and the bad thing being function. Accountability, I'd have to say, is a bad thing. People are almost, they're passing the buck. They're not taking the responsibility of who shares this problem. And I think it's a multi, it's multiple people that share this problem, including the committee as a whole. And a positive, a positive thing about the school committee in general, I guess I could say that they, most of their members show up to the meetings. Most, so.
What do they say, so much percentage just showing up?
You know, the mayor's infamous saying, you know, the city's run by those who show up, show up. And then he doesn't show up half the time.
Isabella, same question. Two things, two things you think that the incumbent has done well, two things that you want to improve on.
Well, first off, Heather Mazafaro has done an excellent job. I think she has been a great advocate for not only her child, but also for all of the children in the Leominster Public School System. She's really focused on making sure the kids get the proper education that they deserve. And I also believe another great positive thing she's brought to the table is the Transportation Task Force. She has done an excellent job in not only minimizing two buses, but she's worked so hard, and not only just her, but the whole entire task force which she's, she's headed, to minimize the amount of money that gets put into the busing. And so, so she's kind of taken that on her, and she's been, and great, great job at both the Transportation Task Force and an advocate. That being said, I do have to agree with Josh that dysfunction is a huge, huge problem. But not just that, communication, lack thereof, I guess, between not only just the superintendent and the school department, the school committee as a whole, City Council, they're not getting the proper information from anyone, quite frankly, as well as the residents. I've heard a lot that they have no idea what's really going on, or what the truth is, because someone will say one thing, the committee will say a different thing, and so on and so forth, and it becomes a huge game of telephone, and what is really going on, and what is the rumor, and what is the truth that I can believe in. Another downfall, I do have to say, is the hiring and firing of the superintendent. It should be as simple as saying, look, you are not fulfilling your contractual obligations. We have seen this time and time again. And they aren't taking accountability for their part in his, his actions. They're not taking responsibility for the whole entire fiscal fiasco. And so I would have liked to see one member come out and say, look, this is also our fault. And I am sad to say that I have not seen one do that thus far.
Okay. So, thanks again. The next question I want to pose, now this question, it's not going to be the same question for both of you.
Okay.
It's going to be a different question for each of you. And when I do these types of things, or when I've done these types of things in the past, or when Kevin Cormier's done these things, people always say, well, why didn't you ask that? Why did you ask that? Why didn't you let him off the hook? That sort of thing. So this one might be a little bit of a sensitive question, but I, look, I have to ask the question, and I don't mean any disrespect by it, but I'm going to give you each an opportunity to, to respond. One negative about, that I've heard on, you know, whether it be social media, or various other things about you, Isabella, is that, look, your mother is an educator.
Yep.
In the, in Francis Drake School.
Right.
Very good educator in Francis Drake School.
That's true.
And very well thought of in our household, but with that said.
Yes.
Does that create, you know, it would seem from the usual, the person looking at it from, from a distance, that there's a conflict there.
Right.
So in other words, you are voting on things that, that literally benefit your family, you're voting against things that literally benefit your family.
Right.
Have you sought a legal opinion, or have you sought any particular clarity from anyone regarding, how would you handle those sorts of conflicts of interest that are going to come up if you're elected?
Absolutely. In my opinion, I don't believe it's a conflict of interest, in that if you look in the past, Chad Raddick served on the committee, and Roberta Raddick was a Treasury Secretary at the high school, and Nona Ogila had a daughter who worked for the Leominster Public School System in her time in office, I believe.
They weren't teachers, though.
No, they were not teachers, but they were members of the Leominster Public School Staff. And so I have no intent to be on the sub-negotiating committee. That's not where I see myself in the future. I also believe that having a mother as a teacher gives me a perspective as an educator, and being 19, I was only in the school system two years ago. So I have both the perspective of a teacher, as well as the perspective of a student. And that is something that I would also be able to bring to the table. Quite frankly, many members are on the committee because they want to see what's best for the students, and that is exactly why I'm running. I want the best for the students. And I will vote for what's best for the students regardless if it's what's best for my mother. And so, that being said, I am not looking for a conflict. I will not be voting on contract negotiations. That's not something I would be able to vote for. I would recuse myself. And so I don't see my position on the school committee as a conflict at this time.
So, and 30-second rebuttal, and I will allow you a 30-second rebuttal after I ask Josh's question.
Excellent. My opponent brought up the perfect word, recuse. What she will learn of, and what I learned of firsthand experience when I was a school bus driver, when I was first on the school committee myself, is you're going to have to recuse yourself. And the State Ethics Commission is a great resource, and they're willing to go over the legalities of where you can participate. And regardless of not being, whether someone is or is not on a negotiation subcommittee, the ultimate full school committee votes on these contracts, works on the negotiations, goes into executive sessions. So it is highly concerning for myself, as her opponent, but more importantly, as a parent, and concerned about taxpayer dollars, that she's not going to be able to really represent the taxpayers when it comes to contract negotiations, whether we're talking about health benefits, teacher salaries, et cetera, because there is a direct conflict of interest. But it's not about what I believe or she believes. That's where the State Ethics Commission would come in and give her a letter, and let her know what she can and cannot do.
Well, now, question for you, speaking of social media, you have had some, some headlines in the past. You know, the Sentinel and Enterprise is not a friend of yours, and there was various, various stories that have followed you throughout your political career, running for state rep, various issues regarding there, some conflicts with the mayor, the raising of the rainbow incident.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Some court matters that, in all fairness, were, have been dismissed.
Dismissed.
And so you're not facing any charges, but here's your chance. You know, somebody says, looks at you and says, oh, I know you, you're Josh Sandersky. I know who you are. You did this, this, and this, whether they're right or wrong.
Right.
How do you respond?
Well, the great thing is, especially walking Ward 3, or even just being out and about, when you apologize and you take ownership of things, people are willing to forgive you. You just got to ask for forgiveness. One of my main things I work on in my ministry that I've, I've started to create is, you know, ways for forgiveness, and how you can move forward. Irregardless, I don't have any regrets in my past life. All I feel bad for in the community, especially in the social media community, which is really a unique community, because they can be vicious. And I've reached out to some of these very same people on these social media accounts, offered them to come to my house, have coffee, or to meet publicly, or to have phone conversations. None of them choose to do so. And however, you know, when it goes to personal situations, that's my personal life, no one understands the addiction issues that my mother suffered from, and what that does to a family, and how I've had to deal with it. The accusations that someone points a finger or says something, and you're found guilty, but really, you're not guilty. So I think there's a lot of misconceptions about myself, and unfortunately, the Sentinel and Enterprise ran with a headline years ago about my mother's and I's situation. If they had ran with that headline today, there's a new law that that's illegal. You can't do that regardless of you're a public official, because it's a domestic violence situation. And having been a domestic violence victim recently in the past couple of years in a relationship, not my current one, you know, it's very troublesome on a personal level. Politically, I couldn't care less, because I've done what I can to reach out and, and offer those conversations to people to learn more about me. And whether or not they take it, it's up to them.
Okay. I gave him a little more than 30 seconds last time, so I'll give you a little more than 30 seconds this time.
Sure.
How do you have to respond?
Quite frankly, if you just use Google, and you Google Joshua Sandersky, what you find is quite concerning. It's concerned me. It's concerned a lot of the residents in Ward 3 who I've talked to.
But she hasn't picked up the phone to ask me about him.
That being said, it's concerning, and a lot of people do not want to see that person represent their children. And so, that being said, I'm not really here to discuss his personal matters. That's not for me to say. He has to deal with what he's done. And so, yeah, you just have to Google Joshua Sandersky, and you'll find plenty of information. I don't have to be the one to spew it. It's all over social media, it's all over Google, and that's what he has to live with, that's what he has to deal with. It's not for me. It's not me, that's not who I am. And it's just concerning to me, it's concerning to my residents, it's concerning to a lot of people. But I'm here for the issues, I'm here for the school, and I'm here for the students.
Okay, but you do realize that Google and social media is a powerful tool.
It is a very powerful tool.
And sometimes it can present.
Sometimes it presents misinformation, sometimes it presents the truth, and you have to decipher.
I don't think either of you are fans of the current president, I just have a hunch that, you know, the term fake news.
Fake news.
Yep.
And, so you have to sort, you have, what I would say to the voters in Leominster, whether it's regarding potential conflict of interest, or whether it can cause past potential, past alleged behavior, if you are going to Google, if you are going to go on social media, why don't you just spend some time, go on multiple sources.
Yeah.
Make up your own mind, and, and, because these are both two motivated candidates, and you have to choose which is the best candidate. So we're gonna, we only have a few minutes left, and I told you it would go fast.
Yeah.
And neither, and so I think this is an area where we have some disagreement. So both of you have called for the immediate resignation of our Superintendent James Jawaker.
Yes.
Okay. What, and so if he did that.
Yep.
The primary, yeah, ever since General Education Reform, the primary purpose of the school committee, they have other purposes, but the primary purpose is to hire a new superintendent.
Yep.
Okay. What are, what are three things that you would be looking for in a, in a new superintendent candidate? Go with you, Joshua.
That they live locally, preferably Leominster, if not close to this region. Someone that may have had experience themselves as a teacher, as an administrator, and whether it's a principalship, or an assistant superintendent. And someone, quite frankly, that's willing to have transparency and communication with the school committee and the public. So if the school committee member or school committee requests information, it should be delivered in a timely manner. That's how it was when I worked with Superintendent Fratirelli. It doesn't seem like that, and from what I've heard from other committee members, that isn't how it has been. So the three things I would look for is transparency and communication, kind of together, with committee members and the public, if they live here locally, or very close, I would say within 10 miles. And if they've had some prior experience in an administrative role, in addition to like being a teacher.
Okay. Isabella?
I would have to agree that I would like to see it be either somewhat of an administrative person, or a teacher, someone who has been a staff member of the Leominster Public School System, not even just the Leominster Public School System, but a public school system in general, someone who has that experience on their belt. I would also like to see someone who is able to financially manage properly. So far, we have not seen that with our current superintendent over the past six years, and that's what has led us down this really not the best road, I have to say. And someone who is, quite frankly, ready to listen to the concerns of the people and parents and students of Leominster, the school committee members as a whole, because I'm sure they are also concerned. Not, not all of them are the bad guy. You know what I mean? And yes, they have not taken full responsibility for what has occurred, but they want to see progression, and they want to see positivity come forward. And so I would really like to see someone who's willing to listen to those members, to residents, to anyone who's really educated on the topic of fiscal management, the concerns of the city.
Okay. So, the floor is yours. You each have 45 seconds, and I have to watch the clock very carefully. Center camera's right there. So go first, Isabella. Go right into the camera and make a closing statement, whatever you'd like to tell the fine people of Leominster in Ward 3.
Sure. So I just graduated in 2016, so I just sat in the same seats that your students currently sit in right now, and they may be filthy right now, and that is unacceptable. And I am here to be the voice for your students. I'm here to be the voice for their teachers, and I'm ready for a change. I think you all are ready for a change, whether it be superintendent, whether it be chairman, whether it be custodial outsourcing. It has to be something, and it needs to start here. And so I'm ready to be that change, be that positive voice, and 19 is my benefit, and I think that will definitely be shown come November 7th, and hopefully you guys will go to the polls and vote for me November 7th.
Joshua?
Thank you, Michael, and thank you to Isabella. I'm glad to be here tonight into this forum, and have the opportunity to finally connect through social media about this campaign. This year is an important year. This year is a year where we're going to see changes on the school committee, most likely from our chairmanship down to several different positions, having new members. So I look forward to the opportunity of working together with committee members, also city councilors, and hopefully whoever gets elected mayor. Most importantly, what I offer is experience. I served on the school committee at-large in 2004 and 2005, and I did a lot of good work for the people of the city. Taxpayers, students, teachers, you name it. And I did receive an all-state award for my work, because it was such a short term, but I was as active as I possibly could be. I believe our role as a school committee member is two things. One, to fulfill our responsibilities in hiring and firing the superintendent of schools, looking and managing our financial budget, and lastly, advocacy. That's where I think I can be most effective. Please remember Josh Klaus on November 7th.
Running down. Thank you so much, Joshua. Thank you so much, Isabella. Thank you for joining us, and thank you to our viewers out there.